Hi Sarah, hi Harvey.
Hi, hi everybody.
Hello.
Can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Hi sir.
Monique, are you there?
I see Mary's still in Hawaii.
Hi, how you doing?
You've been here awful long time, Mary. You've been there a long time.
Harvey, it helps me to take me in another place where in our current situation.
Hi, Oki.
I would love to go to Hawaii. Another hot day next couple of days.
Good evening, can you all hear me?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, because I was just checking a lot of... There's my internet connection can be unstable a lot.
Oh, that's not good.
I know.
Hi Cardi. Hey Rich. Hello.
We can hear you now. Hi. Hi, Oki.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, it is now 7 o'clock. I called or the East Point City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, July 7, 2020, at 7:00 PM. We will start with prayer led by Mayor Pro Tem Sarah Lucido, followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, we ask for your guidance as we undertake the business of our city. As we thank you for the many blessings you have given us, help us to lead our community with patience, tolerance, and understanding. We ask that you direct us to do what is best for all of our residents. It is in your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can you please call the roll, Mr. Fairbrother?
Counselperson Baker?
Here.
Counselperson Curly?
Yeah.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Here.
Counselperson Lucido?
Here.
Mayor Owens?
Here. Yes, can we do the approval of the agenda? Can I get a motion for that, please?
Madam Mayor, I will motion to approve the agenda, but with two changes. First, I would like to remove item J under unfinished business, because I don't think we need to have that discussion. And also, I would like to add an item D under new business, and that is to schedule city manager evaluation.
I'd support that.
We'll just support to delete item J under unfinished business, add item D under new business, schedule city manager evaluation. I have motion and support, please call the roll.
Wait, wait, wait. We had a few other items, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes, that's right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, that's right, I have two more items. Also, I need to also add item E, award the fire station parking lot, and add a closed session, attorney-client privilege, labor contract negotiations.
And then, if we're trying to make one motion, I had one item about the body worn cameras. We said it was going to be, at the last meeting, that it was going to be on this agenda.
Director Rohib is still out on vacation. And I don't believe he'll be joining us tonight. I don't know if he's got someone in his place.
We were told we'd be discussing it, and there were a couple of meetings since the last council meeting.
Yeah, I've not received anything from the police department, and I know that he is still out of town. I don't see anyone, I don't see representative tonight here with us.
Well, the-
But I will be meeting with all of our department heads tomorrow, so I will ask them to give me a status report, and we'll put it on the next agenda for you.
Okay, let's do that, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
You need a, Madam Mayor, do you need a support for Sarah's second additions? Probably, well, I'll second any, yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, we have motion and support to the amended additions to Ms. Lucido's addition for the approval on the agenda. Can you call the roll, please?
Alright, I have motion by Lucido, supported by Curly. So Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a hearing of the public. At this time, we open a hearing of the public, everyone has three minutes, and if you are not able to finish your concerns or your opinions, you will receive an additional three minutes before the closing of this meeting. All questions will be answered during the mayor council reports or by city managers through email or phone call. But we do not... But we care about what you say. So that's the whole purpose of this hearing of the public, and we ask you to say your name and state your residency when you come up. Please let none of your opinions be stated to one council member, but also let these opinions and your concerns be about the city work, please. Now the hearing of the public is now open. Do we have any more?
I do have a letter from a resident.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, I'll go ahead and read that.
Okay.
It is from Linda Flanz, F-L-A-N-Z, our East Point resident. And she says, "Good evening. Many residents are complaining about the speeding on our residential streets. It is rampant, and the efforts made thus far do not seem to be working. We regularly have vehicles traveling over 50 miles per hour down our residential streets. This is not only irresponsible, but incredibly dangerous. I am writing to ask council and administration to look at ways of solving this problem. Detroit has installed speed bumps on several of their residential streets, including St. Clair, Harding, Parkview, and Fisher. I would like East Point to look at this option as well. There are several removable speed humps available on the internet that if placed from April 15 through October 15 each year, would not interfere with snow removal in the wintertime. I don't believe cities like Detroit would have installed so many if they interfered with emergency response times. If funding is a problem, I would support residents being given the option to raise their own funds for installation. In lieu of speed humps, hiring dedicated officers for a traffic unit should be strongly considered. During the budget council meetings, it was stated that a special unit officers would pay for themselves. In light of this, I would hope more than one traffic officer would be hired. Either speed humps and/or hiring traffic officers needs to be seriously looked at before someone is killed by this behavior. This needs to be a priority, and it needs to happen now, not in a year or some point in the distant future. Please don't wait for someone to get killed to do something. Thank you again, Linda Flanz, East Point resident."
Madam Mayor, I see that Mary, Ms. Mary Hall-Raiford, is raising her hand. Ms. Raiford, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening, Mary Hall-Raiford, East Point resident. I have a suggestion about the ethics board selection. It is my understanding that each of the council members were to select a person to sit on that board, but I have a question about that, because it would appear that that would be somewhat of stacking the deck. So I would suggest to avoid that appearance, and to make sure that the oversight over a city council and city employees goes without question in total transparency, that city administration select that board. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do not see anyone else who has their hand raised. I believe it should be safe to close the floor.
I believe the mayor may have lost her signal on her computer, so I will close the hearing of the public. And we will move on to item number four, approval of the minutes for June 16, 2020.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I would move that we accept and approve the minutes from the June 16, 2020 minutes.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Alright, Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens is absent. Well, excused, I'm not sure what that's considered.
And we'll move on to item five.
No, I'm here, so...
She's back.
I'm still here, but if it cuts off and on, I'm gonna just let, no, my computer's acting really bad, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give the microphone, and I'm gonna give it to Mayor Pro Tem, so we can keep it moving.
Okay.
And like that, I'll just say yes to it, so just have me as a council member today, and have her as the Mayor Pro Tem right now, so we can keep moving forward. Ms. Lucido, please continue.
Alright, so we will move on to item five, scheduled hearings. A 2019 community block grant funding, if anyone is interested in speaking on that. Chat open, Mr. Fairbrother.
Ms. Lucido, there is an iPhone, it's an unknown name, so the person who has the username iPhone, if you can hear us, please chime in with whatever you wish to say.
I don't think that's me about the community block grant.
Yeah, I think that comment was there before we got to this agenda item.
But they now have a raised hand.
Oh.
So iPhone, can you hear us? Other than that, Ms. Lucido, there is nobody who is raising their hand.
So we will close-
I see one more, I still see Mary Hall-Raiford's hand is raised, I don't know if that was from you.
I believe that's just, yeah, she's shaking her head, I believe that's from the other one.
Okay, just double check.
So I will close the hearing of the, or the 2019 community block grant funding hearing, and we'll move on to item six, unfinished business. Item A, to give second reading and adoption to ordinance number 1190, amend chapter 10 Building and Building Regulations, Article II, State Construction Code, Section 10-13, violations penalty.
I don't know how to use this.
Yeah, Mr. Fairbrother, if you could-
I'm trying to find the-
And then we'll go on with, I think Mr. Curly, you're ready to make the motion, looks like, I see.
Well, who am I supposed to address? Everybody's talking at the same time.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido.
Mayor Pro Tem, just, we can do what we want, I don't care, but first question is, do we really need to read all nine of the second readings, one at a time? And secondly, if we should not, and we should read all of them, and if the chair is going to read the whole item, why do we need to read it again? And what, if we're gonna read it, then why don't we just say, "I would move to the acceptance", but why read it twice in a row? That's a question.
How do you ask a question?
What was the answer? I didn't hear an answer, unless you can't hear me.
Oh, no, I can, I can hear you, I mean, I was waiting for this, I guess, it doesn't matter to me if you want to just, how we do it. The last time, we had talked about doing them all together, and I think we were told to read them separately, so I think we should read them separately, because at the last meeting, we were asked to, you know, do them separate, so I think we should move ahead, doing them separate, but if you want to just... I don't need to read it.
Need to propose a question.
Well, you know, again, you're the chair, you're gonna make a decision, all I'm saying is, why read it twice in a row? Why would the chair read it, and then we have to read it, and then take a vote? Why don't we just, why don't you just say, "Item A, second reading, and then whoever makes the motion can read it, and then..."
Okay, I'll do that, that's fine, I have no objections to doing it that way.
That's okay?
Yep.
I'm not pushing myself, am I?
No.
Alright, I don't want to do that. Too old for that. Okay, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would move that we accept the second reading of ordinance number 1190, amend chapter 10, Building and Building Regulations, Article II, State Construction Code, Section 10-13, violations and penalties.
Please call the roll, sorry.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Lucido.
Yes. And then we'll move on to item B, second reading and adoption to ordinance number 1191.
And actually, if I can jump in real quick, the person on the iPhone, we're past the point of questions later in the meeting, you'll be able to talk again at the second hearing of the public. I think they're trying to chime back in.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I've had to mute the person named iPhone probably a half dozen times so far. The only other option I have is to, since she does have the ability to unmute herself, is to remove her from the meeting, so I'm not going to do that, but if you guys wish for me to, that would be your prerogative.
Okay, I mean, right now, she's not speaking, so I think it's okay to have her on there.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'll move, we give second reading to an adopt ordinance number 1191, which amends chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article III Rental Housing, Section 10-60, violations, equitable remedies, declaration of nuisance, disruptive conduct.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And then we'll move on to item C, second reading and adoption to ordinance 1192.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move that we give second reading to an adopt ordinance number 1192, which amends chapter 10 Building and Building Regulations, Article IV Property Maintenance Code, Section 10-79, 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code adopted, Section 10-82 amendments, and Section 10-85 violations penalty.
Please call the roll.
Was there support on that? I know Mr. Baker made a motion.
Yeah, support.
Alright. Counselperson Baker?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And then we'll move on to item D, second reading and adoption to ordinance 119- And then we'll move on to item D, second reading and adoption to ordinance 1193.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would move that we accept the second reading of ordinance number 1193, amend chapter 10, Building and Building Regulations, Article 5, Blight Prevention, Section 10-117, Enforcement in Section 10-119, violations penalty.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
Item E, second reading and adoption to ordinance 1194.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay, I move that we adopt and get, or give second reading and adopt ordinance 1194, which amends chapter 18, Environment, Article 3, nuisances, Section 18-51, Procedure for Abatement of Nuisance, and Section 18-54, violations penalty.
I will support that.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
And then we'll move on to item F, second reading and adoption to ordinance number 1195.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move, we give second reading to an adopt ordinance number 1195, which amends chapter 18, Environment, Article 5, Littering, Section 18-125, violations penalty.
Support.
Or.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes. And move on to item G, second reading and adoption to ordinance number 1196.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would move that we accept the second reading of ordinance number 1196, amend chapter 18, Environment, Article 6, Road and Control, Section 18-157, violations penalty.
Please call the roll, oh, wait, we need support. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
And then, item H, second reading and adoption to ordinance 1197.
Mayor Pro Tem, I will move that we adopt and give second re, give second reading to an adopt ordinance number 1197, which amends chapter 38, Streets, Sidewalk, and Other Public Places, Article 2, Streets, Section 38-23, Lawn Extension Improvement.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Baker?
Real, before we, sorry, before we get right to the roll call, just, this was the one last time that I voted against, I just want to say again, I think it was just a little bit bigger of a change than decriminalization for this one, and I just figured we needed more discussion on the change, and it was related to grass height and such, but clearly I lost that battle last time, so just want to, just wanted to mention that before we voted.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Move on to item I, second reading and adoption to ordinance number 1198.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll motion, give second reading to an adopt ordinance number 1198, which amends chapter 44, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking, Stopping and Standing, Section 44-67, violations penalty.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And then we'll move on to item seven, reports from administration, and we'll start with our city manager, Ms. Doom.
I don't mute myself, sorry, I try not to have my papers rustling around. I'd like to share with all of you and our community that the Census Bureau is going to be coming out through August and September, trying to reach those folks that haven't completed their census questionnaire. For those of you who haven't, perhaps in the audience, it's about nine questions, does not take very long. We've done very well for the city of East Point, we have over 75% reporting. 61% of those reporting have done so online, because it takes about five minutes. But one thing that I, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention, although 75% who, folks who've, you know, completed the census is a good number overall, higher than the state average, it's about the equivalent of having a hundred dollars in your back pocket, and every time you open, take something out of your pocket, you lose $25. Because that's what that other 25% will do for us. It puts us in standing for more federal funds, for everything from road repairs, reconstruction, school funding, senior programs, the list goes on and on. So although we're doing well, we certainly can do a little bit better. And I have spoken with the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem about ideas that we have to bring more people into the city, you know, from our community to a spot, and have them go ahead and complete that census. We, we'd love to be the number one in the state, and we're doing, we're doing very well, so I'm very pleased with that. I'd also like to remind everyone, as all of you know, who are on the council, we did have an issue with the server, our server went down, it took a few days for it to come back up, so those folks who may have emailed us, there's a possibility that that email did not come in during those days that we were down. So if you've not heard from us, or you're expecting a response and you haven't received one, please reach out to us one more time, and we'll be sure to be looking for your emails. We aren't getting them all today, we've got a few in yesterday, but we're, we're certain there's might be a few that we've lost, so I don't want our community to think that we're ignoring them. We just not, might not have been able to pull those up, and those might be lost. They're working on it, we've pretty much backed up to speed, but we still have some hard drive issues that need to be read and kind of repopulated. And other than it being very, very hot out, we're concerned for our employees and our community, there's quite a warning on the heat wave, so we are trying to keep our folks cool and keep them safe and healthy, because you know, when it gets to be that 100-degree temperature, or even a hu, over 100-feeling, it, it can be quite dangerous for everyone, so all I'd like to say is be safe, we're gonna try and keep everyone that works for the city safe, and that's my report for tonight, thank you.
Ms. Doom, I did have one question for you.
Sure.
Because of the heat and about how, because of how warm it has been, do you know if there's been any communication with RARE about possibly opening, like, the recreation building for like a cooling center for like seniors that don't have air conditioning?
I've not heard from RARE, I do know, I, I've met with Mr. Marucci today, he did not mention anything about that being an option. There were discussions that the library is also a cooling center. And so I know that they're working, you know, having the doors open to try and help people cool down a little bit, but it does concern me, and we will put out a few chairs in City Hall, and our hallway, keep them six feet apart, we want people to stay as cool as they can.
Yes, but is it, yeah, the library is a good, good suggestion also, I didn't think about that, but to let, you know, the public know that if they do need a place to go to cool down, because it has been really warm, and it's gonna be warmer moving on.
Right, right, they say the worst is coming yet.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, I had a couple comments.
Okay.
Ms. Doom, well, first of all, thanks for the email server, I think that'll be really good, we, we had a very outdated server before, and now I think this is going to be much better off, even if, you know, we were down a little longer than maybe we should have, it'll be worth it, because if we would have never switched, we could have had bigger issues, as I'm familiar with previous cities, you've had some IT issues.
Oh, yeah.
Also, just wanted to say thank you for Munich Code, we put more, more than two years' worth of updates in the Munich Code, so thank you, hopefully, you know, we can keep that on a somewhat regular schedule then, like quarterly at least, or something like that, so that we're not that far behind again in the future. And then I just wanted to ask you, or maybe the rest of council, we were going to do a six-month performance evaluation, so I didn't know if you wanted to schedule that for next meeting, or when you wanted to do that.
I could add that as an agenda item, so.
Sarah added that, yeah, she added that as an agenda item.
Oh, did you?
Yes, she did.
Oh, sorry.
It's the heat.
I, I'm not reading my own writing here, I haven't written down.
It's the heat, Cardi, it's the heat.
Guess so.
All right.
That was all, that was all I had.
And anyone else? I guess we'll move on to Mr. Blum, our finance director. Is he on here?
I don't see him on here. He was hoping to join us this evening, he is formally on vacation.
Oh.
And so I, I just spoke with him a little bit earlier in the day, and they were away from home. So he may not be in a position to join us tonight.
Okay, um, do you have anything to say on his behalf, Ms. Doom?
Is there? No.
No?
No.
Okay, then we'll move forward with reports from our city attorney, Mr. Albright.
Actually, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, actually, before, can I ask Ms. Doom though, one finance question, but maybe you'll know the answer?
Okay.
The payroll and bills, we usually, when the fiscal year ends, it's usually like split up between payments for last year and this year. Did it just happen to be that all of them were before June 30th? Because usually, it's split up, so we know what's for what, you know, fiscal year and the payrolls and bills.
Well, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I will say that Randy was very adamant that people get all their receipts in before the year ends, so that he could have a proper, proper tally, so I would suggest that, yes, he, he's got them, these are for the end of the year, because he was reminded quite a few people, now is the time, and he didn't let up on it.
Okay, so maybe next meeting, we'll have a couple split that. Okay, that's all.
Mr. Albright?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Lucido, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Following up with councilmember DeMonico's comment regarding the Munich Code update, I did receive an email on June 26th informing me that Munich Code had updated the city's code ordinances, and it is current through April 7th of this year. This past weekend, I also forwarded two drafts of proposed changes to the city's cats, tattoo licensing ordinance. The first draft essentially eliminates the individual tattoo license requirement of tattooists in the city, and requires such individuals to be licensed through the county. The other draft retains the city's requirement that individual tattooists obtain a license from the city, and it also deletes a requirement of a health certificate, and also makes other minor revisions, just to bring the city's tattooist license up to date. City administration has had an opportunity to review that, and I was informed today that city administration is recommending that the individual tattooist license requirement by the city be kept, and that is the city administration's recommendation. I know Mr. Fairbrother is present, Mr. Fairbrother, if there's anything that you would like to add, but I know I did receive that email confirmation today, and that is the direction that city administration would like to go with. Now, of course, the city council can go with either draft, they have been put, or will be put in ordinance form, I can have that ready to go at the next city council meeting, just looking for a little direction from the city council as to what direction the council would like to go. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time, I know, Mr. Fairbrother, if you, if you have anything, you can certainly jump in as well.
I don't have anything to add, you did a good job, Rich, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Brian. So if there's a, if there's a consensus on council, which draft you would like our office to put into ordinance form for the next meeting or subsequent meeting? Pardon me?
I think someone's just not muted. Um, I, I like the, the, I think it was option A, the one that's, we're essentially removing all the duplication at the city, would be my preference, and removing most of the ordinance, that option. Anyone else?
I don't, I don't really, I mean, I'm, I don't really have an opinion, I'm fine with what Mr. Monaco said.
What I can do is I could to put both of the proposed ordinances or changes in ordinance form for the next meeting, and then there can be, you know, two possible motions, either to approve option A or option B, to give council some additional time to consider which you're more comfortable going with.
That, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, and I also forwarded the, the changes, the two amendments that were made to the, that the council made to the medical marijuana licensing or facilities ordinance, so I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that. And the next item is the scheduling of the city attorney evaluation, this is around the time that those are normally conducted, and I will make myself available at the council's pleasure for that evaluation.
The rest of council, do you want to schedule Mr. Albright's evaluation right now?
Well, I don't, I don't think we want to schedule it this, the same time we do the city managers, probably be best to have it two different meetings.
Yeah, then one person doesn't have to sit around waiting for the other.
Yeah. Well, we, we have the item on a, a JDF to get a date for.
Wanted to discuss that when we discussed the city managers.
Then we can decide another date for, for Rich.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Albright?
All right, thank you very much.
So we have no, no more questions, or we're done with administration, we will move on to new business, and move on to item A, bid award for the Memorial Park concession stand project.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move, we award the reconstruction of the Memorial Park concession stand to the lowest responsible bidder, meeting specification, Oostan LLC of Auburn Hills, Michigan, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, for the base bid amount of $378,250, plus alternates number three and four, at a cost of $1,500, plus a contingent, contingency of $38,000 for a total estimated expenditure of $417,750.
I'll support that.
Mr. Fairbrother, if you could please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you.
And then we'll move on to item B, reprogramming of the 2019 community development block grant funds. Can I get a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I will motion that we approve the transfer of $5,000 from the Getz Park construction project to Roxanna Park Phase 2 construction project.
I will support that.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, adoption of resolution number 1909, committed fund balance assignments.
Madam, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would move that we adopt resolution number 1909, identifying categories. Madam, Mayor Protem, I would move that we adopt resolution number 1909 identifying categories and amounts to the general funds committed fund balance.
Support.
Mr. Fairbrother, please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly? I think I heard a yes there. Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, yep. Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Lecito?
Yes. Moving on to item D, and that is to schedule the city manager's evaluation. So if I could start really quick, I will in our contract, I believe it said after six months, we were supposed to do an evaluation and we've all been really busy with COVID-19, so it kind of got delayed a little bit. So, but I do think we need to get that scheduled and then also get Mr. Albright scheduled. So if anyone has any recommendation on dates to do them, that'd be great.
How about just city manager next meeting, city attorney a meeting after?
I can support that.
I'll support it as well.
I'll support that.
Can you repeat that, Ms. Lecito?
So to do the city, well, Mr. De Monaco suggested doing the city managers after our next meeting and at the end of our next meeting and doing Mr. Albright's at the first meeting of August.
It's hard to hear when you have everybody not, everybody's not on mute.
I know.
Muted the individual. Sorry about that.
Was just trying to get us to play Jeopardy.
So Mayor Owens, so yes, we would do one at our next meeting, which is July 21st, and one at the following meeting at the beginning of August. Was the motion that Mr. Monaco.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So can we call the roll, Mr. Fairbrother?
I have motion by Monaco, supported by Baker. Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens? Mayor Owens, can you hear us? All right. Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Lecito?
Yes. And then we'll move on to item E, the award, the fire station parking lot bid. Can I get a motion?
If no one was going to say anything yet, I just, this whole, our whole purchasing, just again, like what I said last meeting about how we're doing purchasing here, we shouldn't be adding on to a previous bid that we've done. We, and I was trying to get the answer from Mr. Blum, didn't realize he was out of town. But the 2018 miscellaneous street repair, the $198,000 that we had approved for that didn't include this fire station project. What we should be doing is just anything over 5,000 unless council gave like advance notice. According to our ordinances, we should just be going out to bid for projects like this. I get that. I know it's been mentioned, you know, it's cheaper than what AEW estimated and things like that, but I think and actually, we, this conversation wouldn't even have been brought up if I didn't mention that at the last meeting. We would have just went with the tally without it even coming in front of city council. Because we were just assuming we'd use this bid from two years ago. And the problem with doing that, even without just not being according to how we do things, according to the purchasing ordinance, which, you know, states that essentially any project over 5,000 should be competitive bids, you know, formal competitive bidding, unless city council gave advance reason not to do that. But the problem with doing it this way is if you do some of the math on the bid from that 2018 bid, it could be that the low bidder would not be the lowest bidder anymore, taking into account new items. The Italia did happen to be the lowest, again, if you take all the unit pricing from all the other accounts, but there is someone that is just almost within the contingency amount. The, and they weren't even the second lowest bidder last time. The Louis construction came in at 57,000 and change when Italia's 50,000 and change. But it could easily have been that a different bidder could have been the low bidder. So, I don't know, we're just not following our normal, our normal process here, so I'll be voting. I mean, I want to just, I would want to see that we actually do formal bidding. I guess I didn't know we were waiting to just add it onto the agenda again, so that'll be my vote. And that's all.
Yeah, I guess for me, just my understanding from the last time we discussed it was that they were just honoring, the job had already gone out to bid. And they were just honoring what they bid it back in 2018. And from what I understood, that the bid would not be as low now. But they just, I don't know what the reason was that they didn't act upon it, or they didn't move forward with the project back in 2018. But my understanding was that they're just honoring what they already bid it just a couple of years ago. And from what I understand from city administration is that this will save us money now. So we did essentially, I mean, if I understand it correctly, we'd be going out to bid again for something that we already went out to bid for.
Not, not exactly, though. We didn't go out to bid for this project, though. It was a whole different project. AEW gave us an estimate on what they thought this project was going to cost two years ago, but we never actually bid out the project, actual contractors, you know, construction companies. That we're using this pricing from a whole different contract that has whole, you know, completely different, well, not different unit pricing. The unit pricing includes all the items that would be for this proposal, but it was for a whole different project. It was for 2018 miscellaneous street repair, which didn't include the fire station parking lot. That's my whole point.
Mr. De Monaco, oh, go ahead, Mr. Baker, I'm sorry.
No, 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 please, you might answer my.
No, I was just gonna say, I was under the same impression until we got this information today from our last conversation that Mr. Baker was under, that, you know, we had already put this out for bid and we were just going off an old bid. So I understand where the confusion came in, because that's what I thought from our last conversation also. But now after reviewing what we received today, I realized that we never actually did formally go out to bid for this project.
So do you, I want to, before, do you guys want to table this right now? And get more information from Ms. Doom and Mr. Fairbrother?
Can I chime in for a second?
Sure.
So it's my understanding that when we went out to bid here, we weren't even aware of which streets we were going to be replacing at the time. So the name of the bid is 2018 miscellaneous street repair program. So at the time, we weren't even quite sure which streets we were going to be bidding out or we're going to be resurfacing or reconstructing as it is. So Italia is willing to extend 2018 pricing, which was, I mean, essentially, it was miscellaneous. We don't know every single time we're going to need concrete work. So we were able to get kind of a pre-approved vendor. And I guess, Mr. De Monaco, I agree with everything you say. In general, I do support going out to bid. But if a contractor is willing to abide by bid pricing from 2018, especially a construction contractor, I just respectfully, I don't see a reason to go out to bid if the city's already gone out to bid and we're piggybacking off one of our previous bids, which happens to be named miscellaneous street repair. So, I mean, it fits within the scope of work about as ideally as you can. We can, of course, go out to bid if council orders us to. I have no issue with that. With the exception of the fact that it's probably going to take, if I have to write up a bid and put it on the street for three weeks, plus get it approved by council, it's going to take probably two and a half months. So will it get done this year? I don't even know then. And if you, and if you look at the pictures provided by Mr. Sage, it is pretty bad over there. So we are looking to get it done this year, hopefully.
Yeah, just the, yeah, one point to what you're saying, Mr. Fairbrother, is just that we also don't know if someone else would come lower. We're assuming also this will be the low bid because there's a lot of line items, right? There's 22 or 20, yeah, 22. Some people might spread certain items, certain places, depending on what the bid is, you know, you're going to have some flat costs, like remove and replace drainage and remove, you know, there was one each in here. You know, you've got some people bidding 250 bucks, some bidding, you know, 30, you know, 3,500, 5,500. If this went out again, it could, I mean, we're just, we're just not following our process at all here. That's my whole point. And I guess this isn't the first time it's happened. I know we have, I mean, I know you're new and I'm a student. But it'd be good if we followed this, followed our normal process, I guess that's all. So either, I mean, I propose, I don't know, but I think Madam Mayor said table for more info, but I don't, I just prefer we either motion to go out for formal bidding, or we just motion to just go ahead with it. I think that I'd prefer one of those two. Obviously, a bit warmer.
Mr. Monaco, you want to make one of those motions?
Sure.
I have one more question.
Sorry, go ahead, yes.
Because, all right, it sounds like Brian is saying that we did put it out for bid and you're telling me that we did. I just want some clarity, like what did we do? Obviously, I wasn't part of council in 2018, but I just want to know, like specifically, how did this work? Because I feel like I'm getting two different pieces of information.
Mr. Baker, maybe I can explain that. So we did go out to bid in 2018 and Italia was awarded the bid as the lowest bidder, but not for this parking lot. They were awarded the lowest bid for miscellaneous street repairs. Miscellaneous street repairs is the cement that's put in, like when we have a water main break and they have to tear up the part of the road. They've come in, like Italia at that time would come in and fill in the cement. So the rate that they're going off of was for miscellaneous street repairs. And they agreed to do this fire station parking lot for that same price that they bid for miscellaneous street repairs. But the actual parking lot itself was never put out for bid.
Okay, I got you.
So I do believe Mr. Sage is on, in the meeting. Mr. Sage, do you have anything to add, sir?
Not at this time. I think it's been pretty well covered. I just want to be clear, I don't think it was anybody's intent to do anything out of the norm or anything that is improper. It's just, I think from, I can't speak for administration, but I guess I could say that, you know, the cost factor. I'm just nervous to take it out to bid because I think it's going to come in much higher. So we kind of put it out for consideration based on that fact. So I guess we'll see. And, you know, I think I speak for, even Mr. Fairbrother, say we certainly respect the direction council wants to take it.
In my opinion, it's a business decision on behalf of the city. If we wish to proceed now, we have these unit pricing. If we wish to go out to bid, we can, of course, do that. I will 100% abide by the council's wishes. But just, I'd like you to know that it is going to delay it at least by a few months. And it is, there is an extremely high likelihood that the prices will come back higher, so.
To all the councils, they're on, since none of us, I think, Councilman De Monaco was the only one who probably got the paperwork. And our server has been now, I haven't got the updated information, and it sounds like most of council thought one thing, which is the majority has thought one thing, and we all thought it was already went to bid in 2018. Coming to this meeting today, all the majority still thought that as well. So to make a decision based upon, nobody has information. I was referred to table it until we get information right in front of us. And I make a decision based upon not knowing anything right now. I want to actually see. I would, I would actually abstain to it. I would actually want to see the information, Mr. Fairbrother. Because we all thought, we already went out to bid in 2018, which it didn't. And now we find, you know, that's where I'm going with it. Sound like you wanted to say something, Mr. Fairbrother?
Madam Mayor, do you want to make a motion to table it?
I'd like, I'd like to say something.
Okay, Mr. Curly?
Yeah, this is a tough decision. You know, one side of the coin says that we've never really went out for bids. And what are they going to do when we get the next item that we get a proposal and we never went out for bid? The other point is that I think all of us want to be transparent. And by being, by going out for a bid, we probably would be transparent. I'm just, and the prices may be a significant higher, and if the council wants to to go out for another bid, then we got to realize that the price is going to hire. I don't want to table it. You know, we tabled for two weeks and the exact conversation, you could play a tape of what you said tonight two weeks from now, because it's going to be the same thing. We've never went out for bid. Well, the bids are going to go higher. What else is there to say?
Well, I'll just make a motion then that go out to bid for this project. The fire station parking lot project.
Is there support?
I'm going to support that because of the reasons I just stated. We need to be transparent, and it would be, it would be damn easy to go ahead and award the bid. No sweat. It's, we're done with it, but, you know, I'm just, I'm concerned of what's going to happen next, and we will have another occasion to talk about this. And I know that parking lots and it's as bad a shape as Roxanna is, Roxanna Street.
Motion and support, can they, Mr. Fairbrother, please call the roll.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lecito?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Abstain.
And Councilperson Baker?
I'll abstain as well.
You know, we, we're going to, I'm not going to say anything tonight other than we got, we got to have a conversation on the legal. Who's talking? We have to have a, we have to have a conversation, one of these council meetings, about when you can abstain and when you can't abstain.
Well, I believe that we do have a right to do that. I mean, you know, we want to get more information, but the vote went yes, and I don't fully, if I don't feel that I have enough information or if I want some more, I can make an extension, I can.
But then you, then you can vote no.
I can vote either way, and an extension is an acceptable vote as well. Oh, well, we don't have to, we don't have to argue about that now. We can keep on moving because the vote already passed anyway. So it's everybody's time.
Sorry. Mayor Protem, I'm going to, I'm going to take, take the seat for a minute. It's getting out of hand, that's why.
Okay, I was gonna say, let's move on to payroll and bills.
Thank you.
Item nine, payroll and bills. Can I get a motion, please?
Sure, Mayor Protem, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of $1,307,633.80.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lecito?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yeah. And then moving on to the next hearing of the public, if anyone would like to be heard, um, please put something in the chat or raise your hand. I don't think anyone is interested in speaking, so we'll move on to.
Madam Mayor Protem, there is somebody by the name of Jeanne. Um, Jeanne, if you can hear us, uh, feel free to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm a East Point resident, and I was just wondering what the occasion was at the police department when we seen, um, some, one of the council members delivering food, and it wasn't posted or anything, so other people could be involved?
We won't, we can't answer right now, but if someone has an answer, they may answer during, um, our reports.
It was the mayor.
Does anyone else like to be heard?
Madam Mayor Protem, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, then moving on to mayor and council reports. And we will start this evening off with, uh, Mr. Curly.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I had just have two things. It's already been mentioned, but, um, the weather is gonna be dangerous. I, I can't think of any better word, uh, besides dangerous, uh, in the next four or five days. So folks out there, um, you don't have to cut the grass tomorrow, or, uh, Thursday, or Friday, or Saturday, and so just be very careful. And I would ask, um, Madam Mayor Protem, and Madam Mayor, uh, the city attorney, what letter was, um, read about, uh, speed bumps? Uh, here's the question. If the city put in a speed bump, and, uh, somebody came over, over it, like they do on my street, 50 or 60 miles an hour, uh, and they fly and run into a house, how liable would the city be?
Councilman Curly, are you looking for the answer right now? Or did you want a written opinion? Because generally speaking, uh, the city has governmental immunity, uh, unless there is an actionable highway defect. Um, speed, speed hump, speed bumps are not considered, uh, defects, unless, of course, they're not properly attached to the roadway, or perhaps they, if they were some type of, uh, speed hump or speed bump, they had a hole in there, and someone, uh, somehow injured themselves because of the defect with the actual speed bump. But assuming the speed bump or speed hump, uh, is not defective in any way, the city would have governmental immunity from any negligence.
Okay, that answers the question. Thank, that's all I have.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Mr. De Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Lucido. Uh, hope everyone had a good Father's Day, including, uh, you, Councilman Baker, and Councilman Curly, and hope everyone enjoyed their Fourth of July. Um, I've just been thinking about, you know, what, what does patriotism mean? You know, as each Fourth of July comes and goes, try to just, uh, think about it a little bit. You know, what makes one patriotic? I think, you know, one thing is, how can you make your country and community a better place? Um, what can you do? Just, it could be little, big. How, how can you do something to make things better? You know, if you're just only, you know, critiquing, or criticizing, or, you know, complaining, maybe someone say, you know, it's not going to get anywhere, but, you know, if we, you know, you go above and beyond and do something that makes the community better, I think that's being patriotic. And, you know, America would have never gotten independence if, uh, you, you know, we just, if people didn't have a tea party, because they're being taxed without representation, right? So people were trying to make a better life for themselves, and, you know, we, uh, were fortunately able to make that happen, and we, of course, live in that country now. So I just try to think about something, something new each, uh, holiday. I think we're playing Jeopardy again here. Pat, you keep on calling, man. We're on mute, um, so just everyone think about that, just pragmatic steps to make things better in the community. Um, that's, that's my takeaway from this Fourth of July, and I'm also just one more thing. Excited about a mural that will be in East Point eventually. The planning commission made the step to, uh, approve that it's not a sign, so it can continue on its course into becoming an actual mural, and I'm very excited about that. It'll be in the children's garden. So, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
Uh, Mr. Baker?
Alrighty, um, thank you to everybody for attending, and, uh, to Councilman Curly, I still love you too. I heard you when you said it. So, yeah, we, you know, sometimes we get passionate, but that's how we talk. We talk the same way about sports. So, um, to the resident who asked about, uh, the speed bumps, I asked about that actually some months ago, and one of the concerns that was brought up was that, uh, was in regards to emergency vehicles, like the EMS, and things of that nature, not being impacted by the speed bumps. Because, uh, I had some residents complain about, uh, a certain section on, uh, street cushion, and then also on, uh, topher. So, uh, I did talk to the Director of Public Safety, and the concern about not putting, uh, speed bumps in was because of emergency vehicles and not impacting them, uh, as they're trying to, uh, work to save lives, things of that nature. Um, on this, on a similar note, there was a resident who asked me to tell the police department, I don't know if anyone's here from the police department, but they wanted me to tell them thank you for their swift action. Uh, one of the residents, uh, there were two vehicles hit in front of the resident's home, and this is the second time that it's happened at two different locations, but they wanted to extend their thank you to the police department for their swift action and response, uh, concerning this matter. And, uh, also, I just wanted to let everybody know that the next Gleaners distribution will be Thursday, July 23rd, at 9:30 AM at the high school. And, uh, that is all that I have. And to Councilman De Monaco, yes, I did have a good Father's Day. I got to relax and do nothing. So, that's it.
Glad to hear.
That's kind of Father's Day. Um, moving on, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank everyone who showed up tonight, always participating in the, uh, hearing of the public, whether, um, the opinion has anything to do with the city or not, you know, uh, being a part of, you know, the city and your concerns as well. I want to just do another special thank you to my Mayor Protem for, um, actually knowing that I am on vacation, but still, uh, spending time to, to attend a council meeting on my vacation, and where I, where I am, it is a bad reception, so I apologize with that as well. But I thank her for, um, you know, covering for me and, um, sitting in for me tonight, as well as, uh, the city manager and assistant city manager, um, for helping with the server and things like that, so we can get information, so we can keep moving forward with the city. Also, I wanna send my convulsions out to, um, some of the people that may have, uh, been hurt, and a lot of you read cer- certain things in the newspaper, but I wanna make sure both who are hurt and the victims and the people who, um, were touched or anything like that, as far as, you know, the residents or anything like that. When you see crime in our city, we are all affected. And, you know, I wanna, uh, just send prayers to those who were, uh, who were the victims, and also the police department, and everybody involved. And my prayers go, um, out to the family, the residents, the neighbors, because when something happens in our city, we all are affected. And, um, you know, I just want us to continue to pray for each other and move forward. And also, I want to, uh, say, um, I'm very excited that I was awarded to go to Harvard again. This is my second, um, acceptance. Uh, this one, the first one was Harvard Kennedy School, which I was accepted with Simco. This one is the second one with Bloomberg. Bloomberg has a partnership with Harvard University, and they're doing something. I'm a six-month training with mayors all around, and, um, out of all the mayors in, in the, uh, country, they were able to pick only 40, and I was one of them. And I was able to add three people to join me in this, um, and this. And what they would be talking about is how to recover during the COVID-19 and different things with, uh, civil unrest in our communities. And so we'd be having different, uh, professors all around the world that'll be giving us advice and helping us with, um, having new ideas for our city. And I'm so excited. I added Mayor Protem, uh, Lucido, I added our economic manager, I also added our public safety director, because I think they're our key tools in our city, um, how to rebuild and recover from the things that we have dealt with. So I will be starting it this Thursday, doing it twice a month. And, um, I'm just excited that the things that I will be learning, I can share that with, um, the people, the other leaders in our community, and we can spread that information throughout, you know, the residents, if anyone have any questions, as I go through this training, and, um, whatever I get, the residents will get as well. So I'm just glad that, you know, um, they are looking at East Point, and we are getting a lot of, uh, good publicity. Our city was, um, one of the top cities that are affordable living, so a lot of people are looking at East Point, and I'm very happy and proud to be a part of that. You know, I just wanna let the residents know, people are looking at us, people are moving to our city. Um, you know, every city has crime, every, every city deals with something. But one thing about East Point, we know how to move forward, and we always stick together. So, um, that's all I have tonight, and thank you again, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Owens. And, um, all I have this evening is, I would like to, um, thank everyone for, um, participating this evening. I know, like, you know, more and more people are starting to be joining. I see some new faces on here. It's nice that, you know, people are starting to get the hang of doing these Zoom meetings, because we might be doing them for the next few months still. So, um, with that said, I would like to, um, have a motion to move into closed session for, um, contract negotiations.
Sure, Mayor Protem, I'll motion that city council go into closed session for collective bargaining.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens? Mayor Owens? Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
And I think what we can do, right, we can put everyone in the waiting room while we did, uh, closed sessions, instead of having to go onto a different.
And we have coffee and doughnuts in the waiting room.
I might wanna go in the waiting room then. I want coffee and doughnuts.
I'm with you, Rob.
Best of my knowledge, this does not have a waiting room enabled right now.
Okay.
Do you have another ID number, Mr. Fairbrother? You're supposed to have that.
Um, you know what? I didn't send that out.
Okay, text it out.
Yeah, um, at the very least, I will send it to the city manager right now, and, um, she will send it to you, because I don't know if I have many of your phone numbers.
Thank you.
The only other choice you got is to mute everybody else, except for the, those who are being in a closed session. How would you do that?
If we mute everyone, they're still gonna hear us.
Yeah.
I could, I mean, I could kick everyone out. I could kick everyone out, but then they technically have the ability to join.
If, if we did the, if you add the waiting room on, you could do that. Kick everyone out, make a new one that has the waiting room, unless you can add that now.
Yeah, let me see, let me see if I can add the waiting room into a meeting that's already started.
Yeah, it might be in that security menu, possibly.
Set this meeting. Enable waiting room. All right, let's see. Okay, I do actually have the ability to put everyone in the waiting room, so let me just go through here and make sure I got everyone.
And I know other, other cities have done that, so.
Yeah.
And if someone really wanted to check, we could put one of us out in the waiting room and make sure we don't hear anything.
You wanna, you wanna be the one, uh, signed up for that role, Cardi?
Sure, just keep talking, and then just remember to invite me back in.
All right.
I don't know if we wanna do that or not.
All right, Cardi, here you go.
So, we gotta talk some.
We're gonna see if he can hear us or not.
Well, I think Cardi's a really, really nice guy, a really wonderful person. And every time we go out, he always buys the beer. Did you hear that?
Well, he's not responding, so.
Well, he's not responding, so that's a good sign.
Well, he's not responding.
I see somebody named Carol that's on here.
Carol, yeah, let me get her, put her in the waiting room. All right, it looks like I have City of East Point, which is me, uh, Harvey, Mr. Albright, Mr. Baker, Ms. Doom, Ms. Owens, Ms. Lucido. And Harvey, I did call you Harvey, not Mr. Curly that time, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, so it looks like it's good. Me, I'm going to stop the recording, though, um, because if I don't stop it, then, um, when I upload this to YouTube, all of closed session would be recorded. So I'm going to stop the recording of this meeting now. Resume the recording, and I will admit everyone in.
Okay.
There's only a handful of people left.
And you did say resume the recording, right? So it was off during it?
It was off that entire time, yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
All right, Madam Mayor Protem, um, everyone has been allowed, um, admittance into the Zoom meeting now.
Okay, so, um, going forward, if we can get a motion?
Sure, Mad, Madam Mayor Protem, I would move that we approve the Firefighters Association. If I don't say this right, guys, jump in. Uh, approve the contract for the Firefighters Association Local Number 1561 for a period of June 30th, 2020, to June 30th, 2021.
I'll support that.
Please call the roll.
Would it be July, I'm sorry, would it be July 1st?
July 1st through June 30th?
No, June 30th.
July 1st through June 30th.
Yes.
Why, did he say it backwards, or?
No, he said June 30th to June 30th.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so are, are we good with July 1 through June 30th?
Yes. Whatever, whatever the city manager says.
All right.
Oh, boy, this is good.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man, what are you doing, Harvey?
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned, everyone. No. Um, Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Um, and with that, we will, um, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Show mood.
Support.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson De Monaco?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Lucido?
Yes.
Okay, Brian, did you get my text?
Oh.
Yeah, you probably did it, but, look, never mind.
I don't believe I did, actually. No.
No, well, because I don't have one of those little colored things on there with my initials on it. That's why I can't send anything.
You know, my email must not have popped up there, uh, for. You know, my email must not have popped up there first, first in the, the bunch, so. Too soon, too soon.
Good night, everybody. God bless and please.
Good night, everyone.
Be safe, be careful. Out there tomorrow.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Everybody have a good night.
Thank you.
You, thank you.